Well, I've got 5:02, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting. And I haven't gotten an email about any past meeting minutes. Is anybody else?
Nope.
Okay. So
Nor have any of the ones we approved been posted.
Okay. Um, I did check the permit board today and the Farmers Cooperative, whatever it is down on Long Plain Road is looking for a permit to add an outside freezer 60 by 80 feet or something like that. It just showed up today. And I would think that in the industrial zone, and actually, that's commercial industrial, that the only thing we would care about really would be setbacks. Isn't that right?
Are there drainage issues?
I don't think so. I haven't been in the yard there, but I mean, it certainly on the arrow photographs, it doesn't look like there's any problems at all.
Yeah, it's pretty sandy right there.
Yeah. So I think if you guys think, agree with me, I think I'll just give Jim a call and say that if he's got a site plan, we'd just take a look at it and rather than require a review, or we could advise him to, that they apply for a waiver.
What is it gonna use this for?
Building they want it on because there's Noah Butters on the backside or on the well, actually, there are people that live at Sanderson's. In the
They're not Whately though.
Yes, they are. Whately goes up past the she's thinking about the
farm workers. Sorry, Sanderson Farm.
Right.
And there's the small house on the other side, and there's people across the street in the duplex. Just that's what part of the building they're putting it on.
What are they gonna use this freezer for? I mean, other than storing frozen stuff, but
Slaughter your own quick.
Well, if they're not intending to slaughter, are they?
I don't think so. Hold on a second, I'll
Because that, that would be a that would be a change of use.
Okay, it says adding a 40 by 80 foot addition to house a cooler.
A cooler.
But I mean, that could be heat for young animals. That could be other feed things. I mean, I don't know what they'd be and feed for the animals that they're housing, because they usually house them, a lot of them more than one, sometimes more overnight. So that
That's, that's the lifetop cooperative you're thinking about.
Oh, this isn't that?
This is the one on the other side of the street.
Oh, P G A.
P V G A, Sarah.
I should know that one too.
Yep. Margaret says it's just cold storage for produce.
Yeah. Yeah, they got a really big grant.
Yep.
And I mean, that is not a change of use by any means.
No, no.
No, it's just a an addition to the existing building.
No, I think you're right. We don't, we could we don't need to see it.
Okay. Well, I'll talk to Jim about it and make sure that it's not it's not too close to any of the property lines. That would be the only thing I would be concerned about. Anybody got anything else for other? I did not make it down to pick up mail today.
Mary, we were talking about a proposed cooler. Do you have addition? Do you have the address done?
Um, 370, I think. Hold on. Yeah, 370 Long Plain Road.
370 Long Plain. And what did you mean by cooler?
They applied for a building permit to add a small addition to the building 40 by 80 to house a cooler, which is to cool vegetables and so forth.
So this is already an agricultural building or it's not a house or?
No, it's in the commercial industrial zone.
There's already two very large commercial coolers there, and this would be a third. I think only two now.
What's the name of the party?
Pioneer Valley Growers Association, P V G A.
Okay. So this was just a preliminary discussion about it?
Yeah, I, I checked the new building permits every week. And this was just showed up today.
We informally concluded we don't need a site plan review if we're not offered one.
Oh, we've got seven minutes before the public hearing. Do you want to move Keith around, get him up and done? Or at least get started on that discussion?
Sure. Sure.
Everybody that's concerned is here? So Keith? You're muted.
Yeah, I'm here. Do you want me to just go over what I'm doing? Is that what you're asking?
Yep.
I'm looking and when I looked at the zoning bylaws, my interpretation was, you know, that I could have larger than a two square foot sign. There's no, at my sugar house, which is a business, is registered as in the town of Whately as a business. And there's no residence there. And so I don't consider it to be a, you know, a home occupied business because there's no house, it's not residential there. Grant you, it's in residential agriculture zoning, but there's no residence there. So anyways, that the way I was looking at it is the regulations allow for up to 12 square feet, and my proposal was to put in a eight, maybe it's 30 inches by four, so two and a half by four. And so when I went to, you know, the zoning, I mean, to the building inspector, he was wanting clarification, and so obviously he contacted planning board, and here we are.
So I have to recuse myself because Keith's my good buddy cousin.
I sent around some language from the state bylaws with the agricultural exemption to zoning. And his, Keith's sugar house is is a well, we, the phrase we use is a farm stand, and he's selling farm products that are on land that he controls and more than the 25% limit. And as far as the way I read them, the state bylaw zoning can't, can't something like inordinately regulate a structure and assign in our bylaws is a structure. I don't think we could regulate a sign anymore. I think it's exempt is what I'm trying to say.
I guess I'll just say that it looked to me that the, a sugar house is called out in the bylaws as an agricultural use. There's, you know, my interpretation is that there's a peculiar bug in the bylaw and that the sign regulations speak to residential signs and commercial and industrial signs, but don't say anything about agricultural signs.
I think that's because they can't.
Yeah, they, so, so maybe. And but I would assume that that doesn't mean that a sign of any size is permitted, that
I
like 50 square feet, a billboard. Not, not that I think this is a problem. I guess really, oh, I'm just trying to, where I was going with this is that I liked the idea of treating the agricultural use as comparable to commercial and industrial use for this particular case. And I think the other thing we have in this town is the precedent of, say, 5J and down the street. For me, Happy Valley Organics has another sign, so this all seems okay to me. Though it seems like there's a gap in our bylaws, and maybe as Judy points out, that gap exists because we can't, and there's nothing that Keith has proposed that gives me any concern, even if we could.
Very well said. I will tell Jim Hawkins then that
Maybe we need to take a vote, Don.
Yeah, we probably need to take a vote, and do Sarah and Tom have anything to say?
Or do we make a motion then ask for comments?
All right, I'll make a motion since I've shot off my mouth here. I move to approve the Chris, we only have documentation, Keith, of the sign verbally. Can you just sort of state again?
I hate to break, break it to you, Brent, but we can't control anything unless there's a health or safety issue involved. It could be 50 foot tall and we couldn't say anything.
Okay, would you state what you want to do so we can make a motion on it?
Yeah.
The sign I have is, or that I'm proposing, and that I submitted the application to the building inspector is two and a half by four, which is 10 square feet, which is under, if I was, if you were looking at wanting to follow the regulations for like the business side of things where it says no more than 12 square feet, I'm under 12 square feet.
That's right. So I want to understand. So Judy seems to be saying, we can't even vote on this. Is that what you're saying, Judy? We can't
Well, I think we can vote that we feel it's exempt. I mean, the issue is whether it's exempt or not. And if you
So the, so the motion is that we grant an exemption. We feel that Keith's sign is is exempt from the town bylaws or the sign bylaws.
And the friendly amendment, and we endorse his proposal for a sign that's less than 12 square feet. Emphasize the word endorse.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
So Mary, did you, did you get the wording of the
I was just gonna say, Tom, could you repeat the last bit that
That
is exempt from the town bylaws and?
And Keith will put up a sign and it no more than 12 square feet, and the planning board endorses that proposal. With emphasis on
Tom, I don't, I don't think we can put that restriction in.
We could say we endorse it, it's
I'm saying we're endorsing it, not prohibiting it or approving it.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the motion that we're gonna endorse.
We're appealing to Keith to do the right thing, although he has every freedom to not do the right thing.
Right. So as a point of discussion, I think, I, I think it might be good if this were ever to come. Is this something for after this meeting to again get town council opinion on whether we can regulate signs or things like that at all for agricultural uses?
The building inspector can regulate the signs. We don't have to.
It comes down to whether it's a structure or not. If you read the definition of structure in our bylaws, it's something that's firmly planted in the ground.
Yeah.
And 40A very specifically says we can't regulate agricultural structures.
And we're gonna call for a vote?
Yep.
Right?
I vote aye on the motion.
I recuse myself. Judy?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Sarah?
I had something personal come up. I had just one question, and Heath, I'm sure you're within it, that you come down the hill and go around the corner, there's plenty of sightlines that this won't be blocking. Is that correct?
Correct, and it'll be off the, you know, it's, it meets the setbacks of the away from the sideline that's also in the zoning bylaws. I'm gonna follow those setback requirements.
Thank you, then aye.
Motion passes unanimously, with that exception. All right, so it is 517, gonna open the hearing for the Whately Water District. Pump House. Wayne? You wanna tell us a story?
We got, I think you got them. Did you get the drawing, the architect's drawings of the buildings?
Right, I got the ones you sent in, and I got the new ones after the the cemetery
After we changed some stuff on the site plan?
Right.
All right, yeah, other than that, I mean, there's not much different. We changed some things to try meet in some of the stuff that the cemetery commission was worried about.
Right. Wayne? You want me to go ahead and put that up for you?
You can.
Yep. I have it too. Lucy's here too. Yeah, I can share my screen also if you need me to.
Go ahead then. I'm not ready, but
Okay, so we'll start with the with the with the, with the site plan. So this is the revised site plan in which we took into account some of the comments from the Cemetery Commission. So we're maintaining the dirt lane. We previously had thought we would improve it, but we are just maintaining it. This is just for erosion control. So we would maintain their, the existing apron and the dirt lane, and then we thought we would put in a gravel apron here for, for Wayne or another vehicle to park for the pump station. Um, we also, we had the propane tank up here. Uh, it's a buried 500 gallon propane tank, and we've moved it here so that it's easier access to fuel, to refuel it from, from the driveway. Um, we're also showing a new pole here and an underground electric service. And I think the other change is that we are showing the water distribution. So this light colored water main here is the town's 16 inch water main going up to the tank. Um, and this, so we're tapping off of that and boosting the pressure, and this is the distribution line into the water district. So we're showing that now under the, you know, driveway here rather than through the woods. So we can limit disturbance to all that vegetation.
So what's happening?
Okay, so the propane tank, one of the things they asked for was to
I got the email agenda.
Be able to fuel from the street. But given the fact that they're probably gonna fill this, what, a couple times a year? Um, I think it'd be almost impossible, well, very rare that there would be anything going on while they were filling the propane tank.
And the, the rules are, uh, the national fire protection rules are to have the propane tank has to be 10 feet from a property line or the building. So it would have to be kind of in the woods in here, so it would be a difficult location, I think. That's why we thought this was a better access. Does that help?
Can you describe the gate? The gate?
Do you have a drawing?
Do you have a drawing?
Right. Um, we had, let's see. The gate we originally proposed. Oh. Wow. Um, I thought I had a detail for the gate, but I'm not seeing it. That's odd.
I'm, it was a Yeah, I'm thinking like a cattle gate.
Yeah, that's what it was. I don't know. Wow, I'm embarrassed. It was, it was a standard cattle gate with, um, I think three rungs.
Agway no sag.
What's that?
Basically, the agway no sag.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so I don't, he must be on a different set of plans or something.
Is it, is it maybe on the
I'd have to, I'd have to go onto my work computer and try to retrieve it. I can do that. Um
I think we all know what an agway sag, no sag gate is. If that's what you're specking.
That's what, right, Wayne, we talked about it and
Yeah.
That's a pretty standard piece of fencing.
Yep. It opens to the inside, so would be sounds good to me.
So I would like to request that we share the letter from the Cemetery Commission and go over there, I think, six points to confirm that at least we understand how those points are being addressed.
I can put that if you want. Lucy, you wanna unshare?
Uh, yes, sorry. Let's see.
And as we go through the points of the Cemetery Commission, I'd like some guidance as to whether the water department's response to those points from the Cemetery Commission require us, the planning board, to create conditions in our site plan approval document.
There we go. You're not planning on doing any of the construction from, on the cemetery property anyway, are you?
Yeah, we the, where the water main would run would be on, call it the you're driving into the cemetery, it would be the, say, call it the right-hand wheel track.
Yep, okay.
Towards way over towards the fence.
Okay, so you're, we're already planning on fencing that off whenever you do that work?
Yeah, on the cemetery side, yeah. We'll put up some kind of fence along that side.
I did see in the plan some specs for the typical kind of erosion control fencing that's used under
Yeah.
It's pretty flat in there.
Where will the construction equipment be parked overnight?
My guess is probably inside where the building is gonna sit. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I I can't say that for sure, but I, I can't see why, I mean, what's what's actually gonna be done coming up the cemetery road? I would say is probably no more than a couple hours. I'm thinking half a day.
Wayne, you, you need the trench for the eight inch water main though, coming out of the
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
And that'll be on cemetery property, the trench?
Yeah, it'd be probably, I don't know, I'd say probably four feet off the boundary line into the cemetery, three, three to four feet.
Will it be in the bed of the existing road, the northern road?
Yeah, that's, as I call it, the northern road, if you drove in the northern road, will be we'd put the water mains gonna end up right about where your right, your passenger side wheels of the vehicle would be. Maybe even a little bit more towards the fence, the northern, the northern fence.
So during the time when this trenching is occurring, the, there will not be access on that road for cemetery purposes?
No.
Well, there, there will be, but you have to come around from the other road.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that road, no.
And how long, like, often when roads are dug up and the dig, the dug up portions have to be left dug up for some number of days or longer, temporary you know, plates or whatever are put over at the end of the workday so that vehicles can go back and forth due. Is there a need for such a thing, and would that be anticipated?
No, I'm, like I said, I'm guessing the trench would be opened up and then the road would be refilled and you'd be able to drive on it. I'd say probably no more than a half a day.
Okay. So that's a within, within a day operation?
Oh, yeah.
Wayne, who lays the pipe?
Me and, call it, me and the highway department would.
Keith will be involved?
Yep.
So we feel comfortable that the part, point one is addressed. And that two, so you're, you will be restoring the road to its present conditions afterwards.
Yeah, if not, a little better. I mean, I was talking, I talked with Neil and we just, you know, I mean, I still gotta get a hold of the historical commission, whether you know, I mean, we're not quite sure, does he, if they want it back dirt like it is with the grass growing over the top of the gravel, or do they want gravel put back? You know what I mean? Just gravel.
I think if they, the historical commission would like it put back the way it is.
Yeah, something what it looks like with gravel underneath and some dirt on loam or whatever on top so the grass can regrow.
Presumably.
Yeah.
And I suppose the obvious question is taken care of, that you're running a pipe underground, and then vehicles like propane delivery trucks and others are going to be transiting over the surface and, you know, the designs account for the kind of weight that might move over the pipes and not create compaction and damage to the pipes.
Yeah, what what I'm going to convey to the propane guy is, because the cemetery commission doesn't want, they're worried about the truck having to go into the cemetery. So we're, I mean, that's part of moving the propane tank, is we're gonna try, we're gonna move it as far forward as we can. So when he comes to deliver it, he could park on just the apron and then pull the hose in.
Okay. I see. I see. They, they They, they pull their hose up to, to get to my propane tank, at least that far.
Right, that's, yeah, that's why we're trying to move the tank closer, so the truck itself, the delivery truck, doesn't have to drive into the cemetery. They could park on that apron outside that picket fence and pull the hose in.
Okay, okay. Alright. Yeah, so what about the boundary fence? Point three.
I don't see it on the plans.
Oh, it's, it will fix that. It's the, again, I call it a cattle fence, that wire, the old pasture fence is what's up there, that's, most of it's fallen down, but it'll get picked back up and fixed, if not put in a new fence.
Okay, so you're gonna restore the boundary fence as requested?
Yeah.
What, and what's this about? And it may want an additional fence demarcating the boundary. And I guess so that doesn't have, I don't know, is that an issue with Quan Quan?
I guess what it was is Quan Quan just wants to make sure that, because I guess a lot of people walk around near, near dogs and stuff, they wanna make sure there's something there, so it's not just free range to walk into their land.
So the boundary fence would do it?
Right.
The, the one you were storing?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so that looks good. And then, and then there are, at least in the plans, the latest plans I looked at, that does does speak to insulation, acoustic and other insulation in the pump house. Um, so, who's our? Was it Lucy? Do you wanna just speak to that?
Sure.
Topic?
Sure, so, um, the, the pump house will have two three-pump skids. One, one of the skids is for the domestic flow and the other skid is for fire flow. Um, and both skids, both three-pump skids are called, uh, design envelopes. And so they're vertical, three vertical multi-stage pumps and the controls all on, uh, on one skid. Uh, so it's like a package. And so the pumps are mounted on the skid, they're not mounted on the pump house floor, and that should help a lot with noise and vibration. Um, so these are, you know, the latest, the manufacturer, um, would, says that these are, uh, uh, when the words are they're mounted on skids, they, so they, uh, they offer renewed, the manufacturer would state these offer re, reduced noise and vibration. Uh, because they're, they're, um, you know, they're relatively, uh, new technology.
And you have foam, you have insulation in the building itself as well.
Yep.
Hey, number five, that's probably a non-issue.
Yeah, so what did we, what's the issue about plowing in the wintertime?
Cemetery does not plow.
Right.
The town does not plow.
Right.
So Wayne, if you need to get in there, do you, are you planning?
So what's plowing during the pump?
If, yes and no, I guess. I mean, if there's, if we get a two-foot snowstorm, I probably gotta do something with it. But a normal three or four-inch snowstorm, there's really no need to move it.
Okay.
Okay, well, I do think we should condition that. I think we need to condition everything that's not formally on the plan anyway, but, um, in this case, I think the request not to plow under the graves is reasonable.
Absolutely.
Um.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if, if we had to, I mean, the only smart thing we need to do is, is push it towards the fence.
Yeah, and I think also their point about not turning around on the cemetery, I mean.
Yeah. I can't.
You could drive into the, your, your apron and then back out and out.
Yeah, me personally, I can't see myself if I did, when I have to go here, I, I actually can't see myself driving in and then actually parking in front of the building. I see either myself parking on the apron or just driving in and stopping and walking into the building.
Okay. So what about their point about snowblowing versus plowing? Does that seem feasible or, would you envisage doing that?
There's a possibility, yes, of snowblowing.
If you're just requiring foot access, you know, park on the apron, snow blow to, to reach the, that door to the pump house to get in and do inspections and maintenance and so forth, sort of basically minimize snow operations unless there is some, you know, need to bring in larger pieces of equipment.
Yeah.
Does the town have a blower attachment for one of its tractors?
Keith is shaking his head no.
No.
What are, Keith, what are we plowing the, uh, new sidewalks with?
Uh, town contracts with a private individual to do that and, um, there is some discussion in the future of the town purchasing their own sidewalk snow blower, and one of the things that I had mentioned to Wayne was it would be great if the, this building could potentially house it in the wintertime and, um, we're, we're going along with that as a, as a possibility in the future, but at the moment, we don't have any snowblowing equipment and it's done by a private con, you know, private person.
Is it feasible to even expand that person's contract to include this new booster pump house?
I, from my standpoint, I guess that would be something that would have to be discussed between the water commissioners and the, and that person.
Okay, alright.
Is that really necessary? It seems to me the plow could, as long as it's clear that the plow truck doesn't turn around on the grass and plows away from the graves and doesn't block things.
It seems like the commission has given us good language right here for putting that condition into the, this approval.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so this is, the, the spirit and the, the details of point five are acceptable to the water, um, water department and you can, you can do that. Okay, so then the last one is point six, which is shielding of the propane tank, and I don't think Judy mentioned that.
Judy?
I, I'm sorry, not Judy, um.
Lucy.
Lucy, I meant, I meant Lucy, sorry.
No problem.
Judy, Judy.
I was wondering who she was.
Yeah, please.
Uh, so the propane tank is buried, um.
Oh. Oh, even in the new plan, it's buried?
Yes, that was the plan.
Okay, I knew it was buried in the old plan, but when it moved, I wasn't sure if it was still buried, okay. Well, then, then that's not an issue, is it? Okay. Right, this looks good then.
I think, I think the elevations and the materials proposed are acceptable to the historical commission, although they haven't formally voted, but it has the appearance of a traditional building, um. Do you have a color?
No. You have one you'd like?
What?
Brownie, hide it more, I don't know. Yeah, it's, you know, I mean, we're thinking some color that's gonna make it blend in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I,
That's camouflage.
Yeah, it won't be a bright yellow or something.
Probably brown would be the best camouflage, camouflage.
Well, that's what we're kinda thinking, brown and black roof or something, or brown on brown, I don't know. Is something, yeah, something that would hide it as much as it can.
Yeah, so you're gonna get brown screw-down panels for the metal roof too, right?
That I'm working, I was, I had a, Donna Talk called me the other day and I'm getting prices on certain types of metal roofing and asphalt shingles and that, and the siding to see if we could fit into the budget what the historical commission would like to see, the wooden clapboards and the standing seam metal.
Boy, stand, it seems way more expensive than screw-down.
Yeah. Yeah, otherwise, yeah, we're just thinking the, the regular, I call it tobacco barn metal roofing.
Right.
Regular screw-down roofing.
Yeah, well, I put up metal buildings for a living for ten years and, uh, it's not as good as standing seam, but pretty darn close to it. But I would, uh, definitely not let it be gallo, unpainted gallo.
Yeah, no.
Okay, do we want to, um, take a look at the the restrictions, uh, it's a letter from from Neil and, uh, craft our conditions from that? Modify that?
For Neil?
For the cemetery.
Cemetery commission.
Oh, sure, so, um, what I've, I had created a little bit of a site conditions template and I put a, put that in Word in the OneDrive. And I can, if, if, uh, Lucy, formerly known as Judy, stop sharing your screen, yeah. Um, I could share this. We can fill in the details. Alright, so let me share my screen. Do I have ability to share my screen? I do, okay. Alright, so I took, in this case, I went from previous site conditions and anything in yellow can either be deleted or substituted, so I think we're gonna get rid of the landscape plantings. I assume we can leave in that the plan must receive approvals from all appropriate, just, this is a sort of Euler plate from before.
Yep.
Seemed good there?
Yeah.
Uh, what about historical artifacts? Should we have a condition on that as we had in the past?
This is a condition that was typically required by the historical commission and they haven't met to approve, but I can almost, I can guarantee that that will be a requirement.
Okay, so we'll leave that in. Is that what you're recommending, Judy?
Yes, yes.
Okay, alright, so then, looking at the letters, so as we go through points one through five, six being taken care of, which are the points from the cemetery commission should we be focusing on? So do we need to condition on uh, the protection during construction that the cemetery burial project, plot should be protected with a temporary fence? Or is that already in the plan and we don't need to establish a specific condition about that?
Lucy, was it covered in your narrative? Because it's, I doubt it.
We are showing a limit of disturbance, but we're not showing a temporary fence. We could, we could add that, um.
I think it'd be just easier.
Yeah.
I, I think we could just say that the burial plot should be protected with a temporary fence or burial plots will be protected from construction activity.
Well, this is from the letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Neil is a good wordsmith.
And that means to Wayne, he's just, that, the only time that's gonna apply is when you put in the, the pipe itself, right Wayne?
But I was gonna ask that, you want this, because I don't know how you, long do you wanna look at this thing? Do you want it while we're just working on, in that road or until the whole building's built?
Just when you're on the road.
I disagree, I think the whole time, so that the point is the construction equipment should not park or turn around on the graves and I think, you know, you're gonna have materials brought in and big propane tanks and everything, I, I think it should stay there.
I concur with Judy.
Agree with that also. From the start of the project to the end of the project, the fence should remain.
Would, is that a proposed change in wording, Tom, or would the word throughout suffice?
Throughout's fine.
Okay. Alright, and I, so moving on to the access road.
And just take out the, which will surely be disturbed.
Yep, yep. Is that good?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let's see, there should be restoration of the boundary fence?
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe restoration or replacement?
Let's see, let me first get the original text in and then we can fix it. Here's this, there should be restoration of the boundary fence. Um, get rid of this phrase. Okay, now what should we change about that?
The boundary fence should be restored. No, no should.
Yep. A boundary fence should be restored.
Or.
Or replaced.
Or replaced in a manner.
I think just restore or replace is all we need.
Okay.
As long as it looks, as long as it looks like a lens.
Well.
Right, Judy?
It, it's, it's the, as long as that you said done, that we need to get in there somehow. The, um, one that was there was pretty simple, right, so?
So that, how about this? In, in a condition. How does that work for people?
Good. I think you could take out the last bit about incursions.
Okay, so you don't, we don't wanna record the intent of, okay, that's fine. So I'm gonna remove the highlighted portion.
Go ahead, Don.
Okay, is that, are we happy with that?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on. So far, Wayne's good with this, alright? Um, we don't need to, point four was about acoustic insulation, but we're satisfied with that and we don't need any additional conditions, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, point five was about wintertime plowing, okay. So let's see, now, maybe what I'm gonna do.
If plowing is required.
Okay. I'm listening, Don, if plowing, if wintertime, snow, plowing is required, yes?
The snow shall be directed to the north. And the snow plow should back out of the driveway or the road.
Oh, Wayne, what, what is at the top on the, the west? The, the western side of the cemetery, what's at the top of the, the north road? Is, is that just raw land or is there anything back there?
Yeah, the, there's a, I don't, I don't know what it's called, the shed? There's a shed back there?
Yeah, there's a tool shed back there.
So you couldn't, you, you can't plow up to the shed and bury the shed there?
No, where, it'd only go in about 20 feet.
Yeah, the shed would be, I mean, all the way at the back of the cemetery, another 100 feet, maybe?
Another 100, 100.
That much.
Yeah, they don't, they don't use it anyway in the winter.
I'm just wondering if there's an out of the way place on the west side of the cemetery, at the top of, or along the north road, that snow could be plowed and piled in a reasonable, a reasonable amount. I mean, where's that, so you're plowing in, going down the north road, heading to the west. Where's that snow going that's accumulating in front of the plow?
Just the other side of the gate.
So it'll be left on the road?
Yeah, they don't, they don't plow it anyway.
You can't leave a pile there, but you could sort of push it away from the road.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, because the piles remain longer than the snow and it's just on the ground.
And that's bad why.
Because they will need to get there in the spring.
I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying that if you look at the top of your driveway when they plow, the piles at the head of the driveway are there up, can be up to a month longer, and if it's gonna restrict access to the road. Is there, is, can, can you, is there, to the north, going north on the road? Can, is there a spot that's wide enough that the, the snow can be pushed off of the road?
Absolutely.
And then, then back out. I mean, where does that snow go, is my question? So. I've been sort of half listening, sorry, while I've been doing this editing. I'm wondering if the condition is really that during winter, snow basically focused on the, what we want not to happen. So during winter, snow removal vehicles shall avoid piling plowed snow on the burial plots to the south or further west. And then leave it to the water department to figure out how to do their snow removal operations to achieve that objective. So I'm thinking of deleting the highlighted portion here, even though, Don, you started to give me that language, so I hope you can.
Well, they, they specifically didn't want us to turn around in there.
Yeah, we can, maybe can add a sentence about, you know, the, the, turning, turning around shall not be permitted, but what do you think about this? So far, before we deal with the turning around?
Yeah, well, that's okay, but Tom's concerned about when you get as far as you're gonna plow, that there's gonna be a pile there.
Why?
I don't, I don't see how that's gonna be a problem.
Do not block the road.
And that's my question, is there, is there, at that point where the pile is there, can you turn the wheel to the right and just push it off of the road? Is there space there to do that?
No, you'd be right against the fence.
You're right against the fence, okay, thank you.
So basically, well, we just have to say without blocking the access road and leave it up to them to figure out how to do it.
Right, okay. So where do we add, will it, without blocking the access road?
With, well, west on the cemetery access road without blocking it.
Okay, or further west in the cemetery. Um, the, how about making it a separate sentence, cemetery access road must not be blocked. And then, snow removal vehicles must not turn around during plowing operations?
In the cemetery, must not turn around in the cemetery.
Right.
Although I think they could drive up the apron and then back back up to the west and then drive out, but. That to me is not, and can do a Y turn, not a not a 360.
Thinking, you go, if the snow's not deep, deep, I can just, instead of pushing in, I just back in and push out.
Yeah.
Okay. But the only time you'd probably plow it anyway, Wayne, is if you had two feet in there, right?
Right, because like I said, I can't, I don't see myself needing to really drive in there and all the way up into this building. You know, I mean, I can, I can park on the apron and walk the 40 feet to the building.
Okay.
Well, the other thing that would be possible, that if we did have a big snowfall and you had to leave it at the end, we could just bring in a front loader to move it off.
Yeah, take a couple, take the scoops out to take the bank out of the way.
Right. Okay, well, we'll leave that up to you, as how do you do that, but I think. I think that's good the way it is.
And we're happy with this language.
I am.
As highlighted. Okay. Uh, and I think, I think that covers all the points raised by the cemetery commission.
Is there any other commission, any other condition that the planning board like to see?
Oh, in our last conversation about this, there was a question of priority over burial versus maintenance or deliveries to the pump house. Do we need to say something that, or who, who gets the priority? Um, if there's a burial taking place, you would hope common sense would prevail and they wouldn't be running again, delivering gas while that's happening. But do we need to codify that? Huh.
I, I think that is really overkill. The chances of them delivering propane where the burial was going on, on that side of the cemetery are very slim.
I think 99% of the burials are on weekends.
All right, so. I'm gonna try to make. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve these conditions as written.
Um, scroll, you need to scroll back down.
Okay.
Scroll back up to the top, I mean.
Okay.
Data on that.
So the applicant name is the Whately Water Department?
Or, yes.
Or commission?
No, Whately Water Department, I, I think.
Well, I'm sorry, what was that, Lucy?
Uh, that's what we have, is Whately Water Department.
Okay. And what is the site address? I've seen that it is seven or nine North Road.
Seven North Street.
Yeah. North Street. Okay. All right, so that's the top. This good? Everyone see what they need to see? Let me just make this a little.
Can I quickly interject on one comment I would make, since I'm the one that issues street numbers? Um, that, that number is basically tied to the fact that it's Quan Quan property. Um, I probably will issue a, a correct, the correct number for, which I don't have at the moment, because I just thought of this. Um, should there ever need to be, um, police, fire, EMS dispatched to that location? That will need the correct address, that's all I will say.
Okay.
I think that this is the operative address on the date we're approving and there isn't another one. And all the public hearing went out for seven North Street, all the ads.
That, that's fine, I'm just pointing out that at some point in time, a proper number will get issued for the building.
And if we need to, we can, any documents come at that, we could put several, like, um, previously seven North Street. If you, in a, any kind of deed or anything, that's how you can take care of it. All right, any other comments? Any comments by the public? Okay. I, I'm gonna move that we accept the list of conditions as written.
And I'll second that, or third that.
We never closed the public hearing.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, it's, uh, 6:03, I'm gonna close the public hearing. We probably should have done that before we did the conditions, right?
Yes, but a little late now.
Fairly late, never, okay. I'm now gonna make the aforementioned, uh, motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Tom has seconded. Uh, roll call vote, Don, yes, Brett?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and Mary, this document is in the OneDrive.
Okay.
All right. Continue.
We approved the conditions, did we approve the site plan? And I know that was implicit, but.
Well, let's make a motion that we approve the site plan.
So move. With, with the conditions just approved.
I second that with Adam and.
You got that, Mary?
Yes.
Okay. Brett?
Yes.
Don, yes, Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. All right, so we're late for the continuation of the public hearing of the sovereign builders.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
Thanks, Lucy.
Thank you.
Should I be teeing up another one of those site conditions things for sovereign builders?
I think we've got a long ways to go.
Okay, all right. So I'll take that as a no.
Uh, hello, I just wanted to check my mic.
Hey, go ahead.
You all hearing me well?
Yep.
Yes.
Hello. My name is Christopher Carney, I'm here on behalf of Todd Solera of Sovereign Builders to discuss the project off boat in Whately, Massachusetts, across from Tom's Hot Dogs, and I'm having trouble hearing you guys, if you wouldn't mind.
We're not saying very much at this point.
Okay, very good. Um, so there's been a couple developments since the last time we got together, namely, we were able to meet with the select board and, uh, discuss the driveway permit. At that meeting, it was the opinion of the select board that a driveway permit does not apply to this project um, due to its orientation on a mass DOT jurisdiction roadway. So we have an email to state that, uh, but I believe that was sent off to Don to review, and he can attest to the fact that that was the outcome of that.
I don't think I got that, but if you would send me another one.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay, I will forward that along, and I can share it on screen if you'd like to, to that be helpful?
I don't think it's necessary.
Very good. Uh, so then the, the next development was a lot of discussion around the uh, reduction of the road width in order to save some significant trees out on this project. Uh, namely, there was a beech tree and a hemlock tree that would have some concerns to the board, uh, so. I'm, I'm skipping through the overview of the project, because I believe we're all pretty familiar with this project at this point. The true, two specimen trees here are shown now on this plan, um, one being a hemlock, one being a beech. This would be the location of the hemlock. Uh, just off the edge of the proposed pavement and in a line of proposed pine trees that would go to help replace this lost hemlock tree. Uh, the next tree we can look at is the beech tree, that was definitely a specimen tree, uh, the conservation, when they walked, they found some bear claw marks. And also noticed that this beech tree appears to be somewhat disease resistant, which is, uh, nice to see. Uh, so the location of the tree is shown here, and as we move to the west, you can see this red line would represent the reduced width of the driveway. Uh, I believe the fire chief in Whately, uh, okayed a, a width reduction to 17 feet and width, that's what you're seeing on screen. That'll allow for fire access to the building without any trouble. Uh, and 17 feet will allow for one car to travel on this, I guess we'll call it a one lane road with a pull off lane for any, uh, oncoming traffic. Again, because of the light traffic demands for this type of project, we don't really anticipate two-way traffic often.
Chris, um, the Conservation Commission also mentioned two large white pines at the entrance to the property?
Yeah, and tho- those are located in this area, and unfortunately, those would not be able to be saved. They're too close to the retaining walls and the, uh, the new wetland crossing, where construction will just impact them, really right on the edge of this existing waterway. So unfortunately, those would be lost. Uh, because of the nature of the project and the width of the road, and this being a highly trafficked road. Maintaining the 24 feet of width, especially at the entranceway, and as we move past the retaining walls is really important. There would be nowhere for a car to pull off, uh, this road if the retaining walls aren't spaced apart enough to allow two cars to pass each other. So really, we're forced to keep this roadway width at 24 feet in the entranceway in order to allow for one-way traffic with a pull off lane, so essentially two-way in the entrance and then one-way as we move through the site. I think it's the best we can do to allow for a safe entrance to the site where cars don't stack up. And also, as you're taking this 90-degree turn, you don't want to, uh, be in a oncoming traffic situation with someone coming out of the driveway. It's good to have two dedicated lanes at this entrance for safety. So that, that would be the reason those white pines located approximately here and here are, are not able to be saved. Uh, we've also received comments from, uh, Mass DEP. And their comments, uh, as well as comments from Conservation Department, uh, have caused some ripple effects to the site. Notably, this infiltration basin, uh, portions of it will be allowed to remain within this 200-foot riparian zone. But portions of it will have to be removed and modified, uh, in an alternate location for infiltration will need to be found on the site. Uh, so. I'll get back to well above the basin. As we look at this stormwater basin, you're gonna notice that it has, um, entrances here and here as well as entrances from roofs here and here. So the way this, the, the environmental side of this will play out is that any runoff from the driveway will be allowed to be infiltrated in this. Will be allowed to be infiltrated in this. Two-hundred-foot riparian area, but runoff coming from what they call the purpose of the site. Uh, being the buildings in this upper paved area. Infiltration from these areas will need to be accomplished outside of the two-hundred-foot riparian area. And, uh, I, that is not shown on this sheet.
Does that mean that the size of the infiltration basin can be shrunk?
Yes, this, this will be probably half the size or maybe a third of the size. So this lower portion is very important. Uh, you're gonna notice this one sixty-seven elevation right here. This is an important design constraint for us. We needed to get stormwater to flow from. The crests of this wetland crossing and into a basin. And that, we, we tried to get this basin as far away as possible from the wetland area. We were able to site it outside of the hundred-foot riparian zone and substantially outside of the hundred-foot wetland buffer. Uh, but because of test pits and estimated seasonal high groundwater, this was the, a place in the site that allowed for a hundred and sixty-seven foot. Detention basin elevation and two feet of separation to estimated seasonal high groundwater as required. Uh, and then we ran minimum pipe slopes to this manhole here and minimum pipe slopes to this catch basin here. And minimum cover over the road. So, um, the reason that's important is that. This, the location of this basin, we are forced into this area. There's no other place on site that can accommodate the driveway runoff. Uh, the way conservation bylaws and especially the Massachusetts bylaw, uh, statutes read for this is that. Without going into too much detail. Anything required for the driveway to access the uplands will be allowed inside the two-hundred-foot riparian area. Anything, uh, outside of the driveway. Is, uh, required to be outside of the two-hundred-foot riparian. So we'll be cleaning up some of this grading that you see in the back. So that, that will not, uh, be here. And I'm, I'm still reviewing with the applicant where this additional stormwater will be, will be detained. Uh, I think the resolution to this will be the loss of at least one of these buildings. Reviewing it with Todd, I, I think this front building makes the most sense to lose as it's closest to the abutting neighbor, so it, it will increase the buffer to the butter to the south. Uh, and also preserve, this would be the, uh, nicest looking building on site, which is blocked by this lower story building, so. It will, uh, be a better appearance. So this building will substantially get replaced with a long, narrow, uh, buyer retention area likely. That will accommodate stormwater. There is also a, a strong chance this buyer retention area will be lowered in elevation, uh, as low as possible or slightly expanded. So fundamentally, the same general plan, uh, but this basin will be, you know, shrunk to approximately forty percent of its size. And one of these buildings will likely be lost. Uh, the good news, though, is that from the reduction of width, uh, this basin will be reduced further in size. And this beech tree that was of, um, concern for both planning, zoning, and conservation, it should be able to be retained on this project.
Would it be possible to move the driveway once you're east of the beech tree? To move it further to the north? Away from the lot line?
Um. I, I, it could be possible. I'm, I'm not sure what, what we're hoping to gain from that.
More of a buffer for the butters.
So.
Also, the ability to plant larger trees in there.
Yeah.
As a screen.
Yeah, so these are white pine trees proposed, and it's an eight-foot buffer. And at this point, I think I'd have to just say that. Uh, the driveway permit does not apply, so no buffers to the property line are required based on the statutes and, and bylaws in Whately. There are no planting buffers required. There is a, a, a stockade fence requirement, which we meet. And these additional plantings here are all, uh, done by Todd in order to reduce the impacts of this property. But they are not required by your bylaws. This driveway could.
No, but the planning board has the ability to require screening and the discretion. To determine what kinds of screening and.
So the screening we've selected is a pacey as required by your, your bylaws. I'll head to C four. In the call-out arrow, uh, for this. Stockade fence. This is straight from Whately zoning bylaws that you require a six-foot tall stockade fence with seventy-five percent capacity. So we are meeting the, uh. Regulatory requirements for this.
Understand, but, uh, the question was fairly simple. Could the, could the driveway in east of the beech tree be shifted a little bit to the north?
Uh, the, the radius is required to shift it to the north. Uh, if you could shift it, then you would shift it back in this direction in order to retain the building in its current location. So. Uh, there's a lot of changes that could be made on this site, but I'm just going to, uh, continue to say that this conforms to all Whately zoning requirements and planning requirements.
The minimum planning and zoning requirements.
The zoning requirements, correct.
Out of curiosity, if you're going to lose one of the buildings, do you anticipate increasing the square footage of either of the. Other buildings to compensate, or it's simply lost, in that sense, economic opportunity to Todd?
Um, af- after I get, after I give you a brief introduction on that, I'll let Todd speak to that. Uh, there had been discussions making one of them two-story potentially. But we haven't discussed any situation where the footprints of any of the buildings would increase in size. Now, Todd would like to add anything.
So until we know. Uh, how much of the building needs to be devoted to the drainage, it's really tough to answer that. The goal is to maintain. The square footage that we have. I don't know if we can lengthen the three-story building towards the north. I don't, I don't think that makes sense because we need to, we, so the likelihood is no, but, uh, and, and it would be very unlikely that we would, that I would decide to. Increase the height of any of the other two, two buildings. I, 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 that's, that's doubtful and not, not likely, but. If it's possible to lengthen the three-story building to the north, I would consider that, but. I think we're probably not going to have an opportunity, or it's not gonna be, not gonna make a whole lot of sense to.
Yeah.
Uh, to increase the size. So I think we're gonna reduce the size by the amount that we need to devote to the detention basin.
So I understand you're going back to the Conservation Commission on the sixteenth. Is it due to the? You'll, you'll have the retention basin.
Yeah, we'll have.
Plan then?
Yes, we'll, we'll have that planned for, for that meeting. Uh, well, we also need to run, uh, Mass DEP has some comments that we need to address. And they'll be addressed in this revised plan set, and they'll have an opportunity to re-review this project and issue any comments, or let us know if those comments have been closed.
So Chris, under, understanding that what's, what's required by the bylaws, um, are you willing to explore? Knowing that you're not required to move, move the road, or is that off? That's not something.
So the road has already been moved. Um, it, right now, uh, Whately bylaws are written where two-way traffic is required to have two lanes, twelve feet in width. Uh, there's nothing in the bylaws for any buffers to the south again. Uh, Todd has, has reached out and, and gone, in my opinion, above and beyond, to provide that planted buffer. In addition to the stockade fence, and he's also paying for a significant redesign for the reduction in width of the driveway from twenty-four feet to seventeen feet. All of these things are, uh. In excess of the requirements of the Whately zoning bylaws, so.
I think you need to go back and read the site plan.
Oh.
Approval process and remember. The planning board has the ability to require screening and to decide the kind of screening. And. We also are the ones who have to, who would be waving. Waving the zoning bylaw. Um, so. It could be that there's some give and take here.
Um, so, so the plants that were selected for the southerly boundary are the Irish hews that were, uh, you know, the plant species and type. Have been carefully selected to match comments from, I believe, this board. Uh, the white pines were added in addition to plantings that they were not requested by any board. They were added in order to provide more screening. This is in a commercial district and, and I.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Adequately screened.
Well, it sounds like you're, you don't have a. We had better continue this till we have. Till we have a more definitive plan, but I suspect you would like us to. Express approval of the driveway width.
Yeah, we're wondering right now. That's the purpose of this meeting. Exactly, Judy. Thank you. Um, that. We do not want to redesign down to seventeen feet and then have it be required to be back to twenty-four feet, right? So we're hoping that seventeen feet was what was recommended by the Whately Fire Department. Uh, that's what we changed it to, so we're hoping that you can give a informal blessing that this. Uh, roadway design con- conforms to your requirements.
Actually, the fire chief said it goes sixteen feet, but.
I, I'll reduce to sixteen feet. That, that's fine. I think that'll still allow for a shoulder wide enough. Grading on the outside of this road shouldn't be too substantial. That'll allow for a car to pull off, so I'll head to sixteen feet for a final width.
I'll express the personal view that, um. Regarding the, the road and the discussion around moving the. Road to accommodate additional screening, um. I don't feel strongly compelled to do that. This is just, you know, one of five members of the board. I feel comfortable with what you've presented in terms of the revised roadway design today.
Brett? The Concom felt that if they were to narrow the road near the beach, that that would make the, the, uh, saving the beach. More positive. It, it, it would help in, uh, saving the beach tree.
Yes, that's right. So I'm, I'm, uh, making, saving the beach. I think I'm really glad to see that that's happening. I'm comfortable with the, the narrowing of the road, and if the road can be further narrowed to reduce the chance of root compaction or other. Um, adverse impacts on that beach that we're doing our darndest to save, I, I'm all for that. I'm just simply stating that I personally don't feel the need for moving, you know, making the road curvy. So that just beyond the beach, it curves up to the north and then back to the south.
Yeah.
Where the, in theory, to provide additional screening for the butter. I don't. You know, I know there's, I'm just expressing my personal view as one of the members of the board that this plan with the narrowing of the road is satisfactory to me.
All right.
I think they've asked for an informal assessment of whether we approve of the narrowing or not, and. I would. Move that. That as long as the fire. Chief is comfortable with sixteen feet, that we agree to waive that requirement in the zoning bylaw, the, the wider road requirement in the zoning bylaw.
Can I ask a question of Chris? Chris, you mentioned that, that by redesigning the road, it's al- already a burden. How, how much more of a burden is it? To, to move the road further from the southern boundary if you're already doing that stretch that's in red?
So, um. Really, it's not much more of a burden. I, I would hope that we just leave with a, a good idea of what you'd like. The reason we moved it to the south is to save the beech tree. Um, when, when designing these types of roads, you, you, you can't really run a successive amount of curves, one right after another, after another. It's just not practical, especially with the type of U-Haul vehicles, uh, coming up and down this road. We don't want this to be an S-shaped driveway or multiple S's, so we chose to move it to the south to save the beech tree. And that, that makes sense here. Running it to the north and then back to the south, I, I, I don't think it'll really have an impact on the amount of buffer. So I guess to answer your question. It's not a huge burden. It's, it's no burden to us. We're happy to make these plans look as required. Uh, but I don't think it functionally gains anything substantial.
There might be some site, site issues to site line.
And it would only, it would only move north for a short distance, and then would have to.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Or it could, it could only move, but I would, I shouldn't say would, it could only move north for, for, for short distance.
Yeah. And as a, a point of clarification on this driveway, we're gonna have to call it a one-lane driveway with a pull-off road for one-way traffic. Uh, it's, it's a bit counterintuitive, but we don't see anywhere in your bylaws that allow. For a waiver of the requirements in your bylaws.
I think if you look at the site plan review process, you can see that the planning board has the ability to waive. Bylaws. At their, at its discretion. When it feels it's in the general public interest. It's something we do quite, I mean, not routinely, but it's certainly not unusual.
We did the same thing for subdivision where Brett is living. Cause both cul-de-sacs are sixteen foot.
If there's no, uh, issue from the board, we would like to call this a, a one-way road in order to avoid any possible confusion down the road. We don't want you stepping outside of, uh, potential jurisdiction.
I don't think you need to worry about that. We will waive the twenty-four foot. Requirement. And if you wanna call it when we go, fine, but I don't think it's an.
A motion and a, a vote?
Yeah, we already talked about that. There's a motion on the table already.
All right.
It hasn't, hasn't been seconded, so the motion was to reduce the road width to sixteen feet. Uh, to save the beech tree.
I'm happy to second that. And the hemlock, but the hemlock's not, not, not in, in, uh, this part of this discussion because it's not necessary, correct?
It's not possible to save it, yeah.
No, it is possible to save it. Didn't, didn't I understand that, Chris, that the hemlock can be saved?
A- and this plan set, no, the hemlock is not being saved in this. Uh, I think there's a, a number of issues, uh, with the hemlock that should be considered. Is one of them being the wooly adelges is a known disease to attack hemlocks. I think, uh, redesigning the site to save a disease-prone tree, uh, is, is not a. Design choice we would like to make.
Any further discussion on the motion on the table? Call, roll call vote. Don, yes. Brett?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Didn't hear that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. So at this point, we're gonna continue the hearing. Does anybody from the board have a feeling you're gonna have to do it for a month?
Well, on the twenty-ninth week. We have. Three River Road. And we were discussing whether. We have an, an appointment with Peggy Sloan that night or not, and. But I think we could probably postpone that if that's a problem.
Okay, is, so what's that, the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth of June is the, the right, the next regular meeting.
That okay with you, Chris?
Yes, that'll work for us. Thank you.
Okay. So the meeting is continued till. Five fifteen, Judy?
No, we have River Road at five fifteen, um. Seven, six o'clock?
Six o'clock, okay with me? Chris?
Yes, that's right. Six o'clock on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Uh, I had one more quick comment. Uh, Ms. Cooper had, had requested a development impact statement at the prior meeting. I just wanted to let her know that we have accomplished it and, and it has been sent out for review.
It's awesome. Thank you. You addressed line by line, and many of the things were not applicable to you, but it answered. but it answered some other questions. Thank you very much.
Our pleasure.
I actually do want to echo Sarah's remarks. I was really, I, I, that was very well done. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time tonight and I'll see you again next month.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
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 I already took care of Brooklyn Sugar House. Anything else that we haven't anticipated?
Yes, this is Chris from, oh, sorry to interrupt. This is Chris from Berkshire Design Group. We just wanted to formally submit our site plan approval for 424 State Road. I can give a brief overview of the project and, and share my screen or whatever process. Please do. Okay. I'll share my screen right now. How's that? Can you guys see the screen?
Yep.
Yeah.
Excellent. So just to get us organized or oriented, I just brought up the Google Street View to show everybody exactly where we're talking about. So this is the Sugarloaf Estates. There's three, it's a three-building condominium site. One used by, or formerly used, this is building B, formerly used by, as a medical office. This is the building that we are looking to convert into a retail marijuana facility. Now that we know where we are, I'm going to switch back over to the plan so I can show you the site plan. But just looking at this image, the idea really is to leave the exterior of the site pretty much as it is. And, you know, just convert the interior of the space, 3,100 square feet into this retail marijuana facility. I'll switch over to the plans. So we did our, our neighborhood context plan. I'll try to zoom in here a little bit. But, you know, we went through all the steps to, to show that there's no conflicting uses within the 500, 1,000-foot zones in this plan. The building that's shaded in black is building B, which is the white building you saw previously on that Google image. This is the building that we're talking about as the potential store. So zooming out, I'm using my cursor. This is building B again. This is the potential store area. And really what we've done with the site plan is we've drawn in some lines to highlight the existing parking lot. There's ample parking, as is, lighting is ample. So really, there's, there's no exterior changes proposed other than some re-signage on the building and potentially a groundlit sign, exterior sign. We understand that there's a 5,000-square-foot limit to retail marijuana use in Waitley. So the client anticipates using about 3,100 square feet of this building for that purpose and then subleasing out the remaining space to another client. We do have, let's see, the, the host community agreement. I understand that the select board is meeting tomorrow to make a decision on that. So we fully anticipate having that submitted by the time of the next hearing. It is not included in this particular application just because it's not quite ready yet, but we will formally submit that as soon as we get that signed copy. There's a full traffic report involved in this application. We do understand that there's some potential traffic, some bottlenecking on 116 with UMass. It's fully explained in really good detail in the traffic report, so I won't go over all of that now. But it is something we're aware of and have taken into consideration. The rest of these plans are really just, this shows the existing survey of the site and the existing architectural plans of the buildings as they are today. And the remainder of this document is really the remainder of the digital application itself. So I won't go through all of that, but are there any initial questions?
Does the survey have meets and bounds on it? Couldn't see. Yeah, good.
Yes, it does. Yep.
And that's stamped it being, yep, okay.
Yes.
The stamp.
The survey, the survey is stamped and the architectural drawings are stamped and the civil plans are all stamped. This was.
Traffic. Sorry.
I'm sorry. This, this also, just by the way, was submitted to the ZBA on the 15th of this month, or 14th of this month as well. So it's currently under review by the ZBA.
You have a question about traffic, Judy?
Yeah, I'm just curious whether the traffic study incorporated the new use in, in building A, which is also a marijuana retail facility.
In building A? I can't answer that question. I know that it was, it was most certainly incorporated into the use of building B. And, you know, the, the amount of time that we expect folks to stay within the store, you know, being approximately 10 minutes, 10 to 15 minutes. I can't tell you right now without going through the report if we, if building A is taken into consideration. I'm, I'm positive that it is.
Okay.
Are you considering Old State Road to be the main entrance and egress?
That would be the idea.
Secondary.
Well, I think, I think Roots 5 and 10, or I think it depends on where you're, where you're coming from. You know, I think a lot of, I, I do think a lot of the traffic will be coming from Old State Road.
Because that is not at all a good sightline to exit.
Yep.
So, I mean, that's my very much a concern. I mean, I could understand emergency egress and a secondary egress. For me, a preferred entrance to egress is definitely off, at least egress is definitely onto 5 and 10. But yes, I am very much looking forward to reading your traffic study.
Okay.
I should, I should warn you that the planning board had significant concerns when building A was approved about the volume of traffic. And at that point, there was very low traffic usage in building B.
My personal take on that is having watched what happened with Rise in, on the Hadley Amherst area, they had a cop out there for a month, every day. And I never saw their parking lot more than half full. So I think that everybody is looking at what happened in North Hampton, assuming the same thing's going to happen at other places. And so far, in this area, it has not. None of the, none of the places in Amherst are overwhelmed like North Hampton is.
Right. And in, in the application, it does describe in detail that, you know, the, the applicant is, understands this traffic concern. And, you know, is willing to work with local police details to figure out, you know, what is necessary in those initial weeks. But, you know, just as what was just said, it, the trend seems to be that, you know, because these are becoming, dispensaries are becoming more common, the, you know, the, the lines and lines out the door and the big sort of hype isn't quite as much as it was a year ago or a little longer.
Chris, this is, this is Jared Glanzberger on, on my phone. Unfortunately, I'm driving back from, from Waze now. So yes, the, I think the expectation is that we would, we would have a, a police officer stationed outside for the, you know, certainly for the first few weeks. And it would be, I think the way we have it phrased is it would be at the discretion of the Waze police as to when that detail would be. So it won't be us, you know, with a predetermined number of weeks. It would be, you know, as, as, you know, Waze PD decides that, you know, that as Don, I think, was, was saying, that since there is no longer a need for it. And there may never be a need for it. You know, we may not see the types of crowds. As I think Chris was saying, that, you know, that these crowds may not come.
I'm not concerned about the quantity. I'm just concerned about any traffic trying to come out of there. And you're coming right below the crest of a hill that people do not mind the speed limit. So any turn with a road across the street in an intersection, I mean, it's just, my attendant, other business that's down that road a couple times a year, I generally go through the parking lot. It hasn't been bad in the last year, but it is a time of the day that is a very dangerous place to get out of. But again, yay, traffic study.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, we certainly want to make it, we want to make sure that it's safe and that, you know, people are, are accessing it a reasonable way. So that's something that we will certainly pay attention to.
Okay. Do you want to set a date for a public hearing?
No, but we have to.
Not the 29th.
Yes, not the 29th.
I would say that is July regular meeting.
Okay.
All right. So that looks to be July 27th. The last Tuesday of July.
Yes.
Okay.
5:15?
Sounds good to me. Have you sent electronics forms to email them to me yet?
I have not yet, but I'll do that after this meeting and we'll drop off the hard copies tomorrow.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chris, could I just have your last name to go with this?
Sure. It's Schufler.
Oh, I just, we've been dealing with many Chris's lately. I wanted to make sure which one you were.
Okay, gotcha.
So this is 424 State Road. 424 State Road, and we're going to do a public hearing at 5:15. I'm starting to put little files, guys, in our, in our folders for the various meeting dates with notes about what we've put on the agenda for those dates.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just looking at Google Street View. And that is ugly, ugly intersection there. Okay, anything else anybody would like to talk about today? I obtain a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, vote, Don, yes? Brett?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.